No.
So just keeping your attention on that.
Uh?
This movie is not doing it funny.
Yeah, it is.
It is? The what? I took it off of the movie. Oh, you're on mute.
Got so much in the movie. Where's Pucky upstairs?
No, he's back here.
I told you, it's all your fault. Stop sending me fucking pizza stuff. I told you about you. Not about pizza.
That's why we're turning to it on mute.
I'd love to go somewhere for a couple. Where do you want to go? You don't like the main idea?
Does it have a wrist?
A what?
A wrist.
This in the woods? Go wifi right easy when that's great.
Open mic.
Can't look much.
The microphone's cracked out, so.
Open mic.
It is on mute.
Then they go on vacation.
Hey, Josh. Hey, Mark.
Hey, Charlie. Jane, are you on yet?
Yeah, here he is. He's connected right now. Hello?
Hi, Jane.
How you doing, Mike?
Good, thanks. Okay, it's 6:30. I will call the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health meeting of March 4, 2021 to order. And we have a lot under COVID, I see Tony tonight. So why don't we start with that? I don't know if Deb is on yet. Is she? I see John.
She's not going to be able to make it time.
Okay. Okay, so it's up to you and John to bring us through this, I guess.
So statistics, we're doing very well in town as far as numbers go. We only have one active case at the moment. So numbers have been going down. We're seeing that across the Commonwealth, across the country, really. Some of that, you know, we have vaccine coming rolling out. We also have, you know, testing, testing is kind of is down a bit, but you know, still we're, we're, we feel we're doing pretty good. Where, where I want to give some update on the vaccine update is the state is, you know, and this isn't just here in the heart or in Lynn, the state is running into a supply-demand issue. We're, we're still very limited as far as access to the supply of vaccines. And they have increased the amount of mass state vaccination sites, which are prioritized as well as hospitals. And then as of just this other day, President Biden and Governor Baker falling in line with that has opened eligibility up to teachers starting next week. So you have the same amount of supply with more vaccination sites and more eligible participants. So you, so that's where we're running into some issues. I don't know if folks have seen the news, but you know, today there's, this week, there's really no new first-dose vaccines available. So what they're doing is they're prioritizing second-dose vaccines at the moment because when you get your first shot, you're required to get your second shot within a certain amount of time. So they have to prioritize that second dose, that second dose and hold on offering new single, initial dose. But the Johnson, 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 Johnson vaccine has been given the green light and it's starting to get distributed, but it as well is, you know, there is still some limited supply on it. The nice thing about Johnson, Johnson is it's a one, it's a one-time shot versus having to get two shots. And we're hoping that over the next month or so, it gets produced, you know, more and more. We have more and more vaccine appointments available.
Hey, Tony? As I, as I understand that that second shot, the vaccine is the same as that given in the first shot?
If you got the Moderna in your first shot, you have to get Moderna for your second. If you got Pfizer, you have to get Pfizer.
You were just talking about the vaccine for the second being available, not the first, but my understanding is that that vaccine is the same as that used in the first shot.
It is, but with limited supply, they, they are prioritizing folks who have appointments for their second dose.
Oh, okay.
They have to get it within a certain timeframe.
Yeah, I misunderstood.
Yeah. No, thanks for asking. So, you know, our, our call center is still up and running. They're doing a great job getting folks appointments, but we are encouraging folks to keep a lookout. The mass, like I said, the mass sites, Dilett, Fenway, Danvers, they're opening more are, are prioritized. So they're getting a lot of, they're getting a lot of the vaccines first. Health centers are also getting a lot of, are prioritized, which is nice for us being tied in with Lynn and the Community Health Center. So we're get, so the clinic in Lynn is getting vaccines through that avenue. But another thing to keep in mind is CVS, at least CVS, I'm not sure about Walgreens, but CVS gets their vaccines directly from the federal government. It doesn't, it doesn't pass through the state. So you may see availability on CVS's website where there may not be availability at, you know, local clinic in Lynn or at the mass vaccination sites. In fact, even teachers that are technically not eligible until next week, they are listed as eligible immediately if they were to get an appointment through CVS because it kind of falls directly from the federal government. So there's, there's a couple moving parts and a slight slowdown of availability, but we're hoping that that picks right back up in the coming weeks. We also have good news as far as funding goes. You know, if you're following what's happening at the federal level, the House passed a COVID relief bill that included funding for municipal government for purposes of COVID-related costs. It still has to get through the Senate, I believe. I actually don't know if they, if they finalize it or made some changes. That's a hurdle that it has to get through, but signs, signs are good and we're looking forward to and hoping that that gets through. And a lot of that on the House side was orchestrated through Congressman Neal, Congressman Moulton, you know, Massachusetts Congressman. So that's a good, that's a big plus. And then the Lynn Health, you know, the Lynn Health Clinic is still looking for help. And on our website is a job description for a community care coordinator. It pays 20 bucks an hour. There's, you know, non-clinician type work available there. So if anybody's, you know, looking to help out or make a little bit of money and is available, please take a look at our website and take a look at that job posting. And then, and then lastly, I'll, I'll push it to John to give an update on the most recent reopening phase changes.
I'll keep it brief. As you may know, this past Monday, we entered phase three, step two. And because the, the data is going in the right direction and has been going in the right direction long enough to consider it a trend, Governor Baker announced that March 22nd is expected to be the day we enter phase four, step one. And there are quite a few changes at each step that affect quite a few operations, businesses and, and personal in town. And I call people's attention to the town website that each time the governor makes an announcement within hours, our contractor posts an update. And not only is it a summary, but there are links within that update to the state mass.gov website where the full announcement from the governor can be viewed as well as further summaries and down to the specifics as to how it affects people's personal, professional, organizational needs. If people have specific questions, they're encouraged to contact myself and we will drill down into the, where we are at the state level and figure out how it applies to each person's, each person's questions. Does anybody have any questions at, at this point?
Well, good, John. Thanks. Hopefully there's a light at the end of the tunnel here.
It's encouraging.
Yeah, it's encouraging. Thank you. Anything else on COVID, Tony?
No, not for me.
Okay, let's go on to open comments. Josh, Jean, any opening comments at this point?
No, I have none.
I was just going to mention, you know, this is budget time and I've attended a couple of the Advisory and Finance Committee meetings, but you know, these volunteers put in a ton of time, especially this time of year. They take their, their responsibility, you know, very seriously. And, you know, we, most of us typically see them at town meeting and get the warrant book that they put together, but there's, there's a lot of work that goes on in the background and we're lucky to have highly functioning bin con right now. So thanks to them and all the time they're putting in.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Josh. Hundred percent. Okay. Let's see, I want to remind people that the parking ban is still in effect until March 20th. Runs from 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM. The 2021 parking stickers are available to purchase online. You go to the hat.org, starting on March 15th, they'll be available. What's the cost of them?
Also, I just wanted to thank the Johnson School, sixth grade kids. We, every year we send them over, actually it just started in the last couple of years, we send them over a, four different color options to choose from. And they, they do a little contest. So we have a, it's a winter white with the, with green lettering this year. So I want to thank the sixth grade class for helping us pick out the color of this year's sticker.
Good. And what's the cost?
That's cute.
I want to say 20.
Really? Okay.
This, there's no increase.
It says $10.
$10?
$10.
Okay, yeah, we haven't, we did not increase the price, so whatever it was last year.
Sounds good. Also, the Community Preservation Committee is accepting grant applications. They have to be due by March 12th. You can submit the, you can get the application online. And you can submit it to Kate Taylor at the hat.org. Or you can bring it in manually if you want. We also have posted a, the Council on Aging Director's job online. So if anyone is interested, submit a resume or letter of intent again to Kate Taylor at the hat.org or mail it to the hat town hall. And finally, Kelly, Charles Kelly Scholarship will be accepting applications now. They're due by April 16th. So get your applications in. I want to say that the review of these applications are anonymous. The Board of Selectmen don't know who they are from. We each review them and, and rank them in the order that we think is most appropriate. And then Christian will tally up the women. So get your applications in. Okay, other new business. We have a presentation here from Max McDonough. I see Max, you're online. This is a presentation about plastic bag ban proposal. So Tony, you want to tee this off or you want to just send it over to Max?
Max reached out to us via email is, and presented, sent me over this proposal. Wanted to get in front of the Board of Selectmen to present this proposal to be included in this year's Tommy Warren regarding plastic bag, ban for plastic bags. So Matt, you are unmuted and I have the presentation up on the screen. If everybody, can you, can you all see it, see this?
Yes.
All right, Matt, take it away.
Thank you. Hi, and thank you for having me. My name is Max McDonough. Um, my name is Max McDonough. Um, I'm a student at Swamp Scott High School and I'm a team lead with the Massachusetts Youth for Climate Justice. Uh, where I help students from across the state to make positive environmental change in their communities. I have lived in the hot for my entire life. Um, growing up here, I believe has made me have a close connection to, um. The environment around me, living in a town with such pristine beaches and beautiful oceans surrounding us. This town is part of a fragile environment that we live in. Uh, one thing I keep noticing though, as I get older is pollution in town. Plastic bags stuck in trees and on the sides of our streets. Plastic on beaches and in the ocean. This plastic, unless meticulously cleaned up, won't go away for generations. It will keep building up and polluting our special town unless we do something about it. And that's why I'm here tonight, um, unless we do our part in stopping this pollution at the source. Um, so, uh, the other side, uh, the second slide is good for now. Um, so there's many alternatives to single-use plastic bags, such as biodegradable plastic paper and reusable bags. Using these alternatives will benefit our community by keeping it clean as well as making our seafood safer to eat and keeping wildlife safe. This is why I'm proposing that the Board of Selectmen put into place a bylaw to ban non-compostable plastic shopping bags. So the photos on the slide were taken at forty steps beach and at Lodge Park. The photos on the left are the same bags sold at a convenience store in town. And the ones on, um, the right are white plastic bags that have been on the ground for a long time, as you can see. But have not degraded and are clearly visible. Uh, next slide, please. Um, Nahat Swim has collected data on plastic bags that were found on beaches in the hot. Over just the past two years, four hundred and sixty-six plastic bags were recorded. Most of them, plastic shopping bags, over the course of only six beach cleanups. Now, banning non-compostable plastic bags is not a new thing. Over the past three decades, more than a hundred and fifty cities and towns in the state. Have introduced some type of single-use bag ban. This includes nearby municipalities like Lynn's, Revere, Swamp Scott, Marblehead, and many more. Uh, next slide, please. Along the entire east coast of Massachusetts, only five towns do not have a bag ban. Nahat is one of them. A bag ban would be a simple bylaw that would help keep our parks and beaches clean for years to come. Like I mentioned earlier, these plastic bags just build up and up and they do not go away for years. And these bags are the ones being used by many businesses in town currently. Compostable biodegradable plastic bags are required to biodegrade in under a year. Uh, some biodegrade in three to four months, six months, but they're all under a year. Um, and when these bags are inevitably littered, they won't pollute towns, the town like plastic bags. Bag bans are not something new. The first ban in the state was put into place about three decades ago. And currently, over sixty percent of the state's population lives under a bag ban. Next slide, please. Um, the plastic bags in this slide were all recently found around town. Most of these are whole bags as they take years to break down. They were found in trees, on the ground, and on our beaches. Next slide. As you can see, the vast majority of towns along the coast in eastern Massachusetts have bag bans. Nahat is one of the few towns along the coast without one. Most coastal towns have bag bans that have bag bans sight being near the ocean as one of the main factors of having a ban. They do not want these bags to pollute beaches and marine environments due to their detrimental effects. Next slide. Nahat by nature is negatively impacted more than other towns. Around eighty percent of the trash in our ocean is plastics, which means it will undoubtedly end up on our beaches. Plastic bags are made of a variety of unhealthy and toxic materials. Like, um, they have chemicals like flame retardants, antimicrobials, and plasticizers. Uh, when these bags degrade in our environment, like we saw in the pictures bef- before. Chemicals are released into our land and water that can make it unsafe. Uh, next slide, please. If this ban were to be put, um, if this ban were to be put in place, it would affect a handful of businesses. Some of these businesses would have, have used biodegradable bags in the past or are currently using them. The cost of a plastic bag is about a cent or half a cent. The cost of paper bags averages about three cents and biodegradable plastics can range from three to ten cents. Some businesses choose to add a five or ten cent fee because the compostable bags cost a few more cents. Although some businesses choose to not charge a fee. And just for reference, both of the bags pictured here are, uh, compostable. On the left is compostable paper, on the right is compostable plastic. Next slide, please. These photos all show how wildlife is affected by plastic bags. The bags get stuck on the animals, which can suffocate them or limit rage of, range of motion, causing predators to get them easier. They can also mistake bags for food, which can cause starvation or suffocation. Uh, next slide. So these are some examples of a bag, of bag ban bylaws. The first one is a draft town bylaw from the Sierra Club. The second is a, um, is the city of Lynn's bag ban regulations. And the third is Marblehead's bag ban bylaw. Um, so just in conclusion, thank you for listening, um, and please consider this proposal. Because a bag ban bylaw would benefit Nahat in more ways than one. This isn't just about Nahat, it's about the entire local ecosystem, helping make a cleaner and safer community. Um, and now I believe Vi from the Hot Swim, a community partner on this proposal, would like to speak for a moment. But these are the last slides in the. Proposal.
All right, Vi, you're unmuted.
Okay, I can see the, uh, slides right now. Can you see me? Can you all see me? I like the slides. Okay. Well, thank you, Max. That was a, a really good.
Do you want the slides up or would you want me to return to, uh?
No, I think Max did a great job presenting his slide.
I agree.
See your faces. I really like seeing faces. Um, yes, so thank you, Max. That was a really great presentation. He did a great job, great pictures, and Max has worked hard on this. Um, it was his idea, he, there I am. He, um, you know, asked if Swim could provide data and Swim has been collecting data. But every, everything that we have picked up since twenty twelve. Um, I have archived and it's on our website, actually. And so I gave him access to all of that, which of course is public information. That's where he got his data. And I strongly encourage you to support this bylaw. It's the right way, thing to do. And truly, um, the pictures of the animals, um, tangled up in plastic is actually, I couldn't look at them, they're so sad. So thank you, Max, and I wish you a, a, a long and active life in helping protect our environment. And, um, I look forward to partnering with you in the future on more projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Vi, and, and Max. That was a very impressive presentation. Thank you for, um, giving, giving it to us, uh, very thoughtful and, uh, well laid out. I, I've got a couple of questions, uh, Tony, uh, I see Dan, you're, you're on, on, uh, have we looked at, um. Um, a simple bylaw that could be presented to the town?
I've not looked at it yet, uh, but this comes in generally under the home rule powers that, that we have. As long as we don't contradict any state law, like for example, we can't require that, you know, George charges a fee. For these bags, that would be in violation of the state law and that has been knocked down in the past by the Attorney General's office. But largely, this is a very, um, a very strong initiative. It's a court case came down in, I'm sorry, New York last year, basically putting a stamp of approval on these type of bans, uh, with some limitations. So, uh, what we would do is see what the Attorney General has approved over the past few years. And we would of course mimic that moving forward if the Board of Selectmen so chose.
Would require a, a town meeting vote, Dan?
Yeah, it would be a bylaw.
That would be a simple majority vote, I believe, right? It's not a zoning.
It's not a zoning bond like that. The only way we could do it without town meeting is somehow for the Department of Health to say it's a public hazard. Not quite sure we're there yet, but I don't think we really need that. Town meeting would be the safest way to go.
Well, I'm, I'm, there's one member of the board, I'm certainly in favor of, um, letting town decide whether they want to support this or not. Uh, so I wouldn't have a problem with getting a draft, uh, bylaw together, Dan. And, um, and Josh and Jean, you might want to join in.
I just want to, um, say, Max, I'm so appreciative of you, um, bringing this to us. Uh, very impressive presentation and, um. I'm just really grateful that, that you did this and, uh, I will wholeheartedly support, uh, adding a word article. And I can guarantee you, I will vote in the affirmative for the ban. So thank, just thank you very much, Max.
Dean, hold on. You gotta unmute, Jean.
Okay. Okay, well, we can get back to Jean, uh. Okay, Dan, so, um, could you put a, um. A bylaw together, maybe you want to, uh, uh, Max, uh, maybe you could get, um. Uh, Dan Script, who is a town, town council, uh, his email and you could guys could shoot some, share some information. And Dan, if we could get a, um, a draft bylaw for our next meeting.
No problem. I look forward to work with Max. We'll get it done.
We'll put it in the, uh, we'll put it in the line.
Okay.
I'll put, uh, Max and Dan on email together right now.
Hey, did I get back on there?
Yeah, go ahead, Jean.
Was that intentional, Tony?
No, I was asking you to unmute.
Hey, uh, Max, that was a great presentation. Is there any way? Or, or is it possible Max could give that presentation at town meeting?
Yes, uh, you know, certainly we're going to have the ability to, um. Eat as a, as a, uh. Well, I don't, Max, I don't know if, you, you may not be a registered voter yet, but you can be, the moderator can give you the, the ability to speak at town meeting.
I, I am a registered voter.
All right, so we can certainly figure out a way to, to, um, show it on the, on the, on the big screen. You can walk through it.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, great, yeah, Jean. Okay, again, thanks, Max, and I'm sure you and Dan will get something for our next meeting. So we can look at it and approve it, get it in the warrant. Good job. Uh, um, let's move on. On next, we have a presentation by National Grid. I see there are a few people from National Grid here. Uh, this is about an underground conduit request on, uh, Cliff Street.
Yep, so, um, I'll unmute Faith. Um, Faith probably can answer some questions if you have any. Her presentation on Little in the Hot comes a little bit later in the agenda. But, uh, what you have in front of us here is a petition to the Board of Selectmen to allow. For a, um, underground conduit on, uh, Cliff Street. Um, it comes to us from a resident. And, and we've done this in the past. Maybe you can help me explain to the selectmen what their charge is on this.
Um, excuse me, uh, my name is, uh, John Jankowski. I'm one of the engineers that covers Nahat. Um, so I'm taking care of this one right here. Uh, my name again is John Jankowski. Um, I'm representing National Grid. My address is one seventy Bedford Street in Malden, Mass. Um, so in this proposal here, the customer at twenty-four Cliff Street is upgrading her, is upgrading the service. Uh, so we have to do a little bit of work out there. Um, we have to replace the transformer, I think it was thirty-three, uh, Cliff Street. We're going to upgrade the service, uh, upgrade the transformer, excuse me, and, uh, upgrade the cable. But ninety percent of the work that we're doing is just to be no digging at all. Uh, the only digging that'll be, uh, needed will be from, there's a manhole, I think it's, uh. Manhole four in front of twenty-four Cliff Street. We kind of install about, uh, hmm, I don't know, was it, uh, forty feet of, uh. Three-inch conduit from that manhole to the property line. Uh, the customer will put a property line, uh, at that location right there. And we're just replacing cable, uh, replacing the transformer, so just really right at that location right there. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, uh, John, uh, smart color them, uh. Everything is underground up there now anyway, right?
That's correct, yes. Yep. Uh, there are streetlights out there, but it's all being fed from the underground, yes.
Okay, um, I, I, this is standard request, uh, I have no problem with this.
Uh huh.
Josh or Jean?
I have no issues with it.
Jean?
You. Electric wits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way always here and after.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to read that once more, Jean, because you broke up halfway through it.
I think you have to get a little closer to the computer, Jean.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the petition submitted by National Grid. To construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures. Under and across the public ways, always here and after.
There's the next page, right?
Well, that's. Yep, go to the, the next page, keep reading.
Yeah, I've got it too, I don't have a next page. I've got them. That's, that's what I have.
Do I finish, uh? Should I take a shot at it? Go ahead, just finish it.
Oh, here I've got it. It's out, out of order. Set underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Cliff Street, Nahat, Mass. The following are the public ways or parts of ways along which the underground electric conduits above referred to may be laid. Cliff Street, Nahat, National Grid to install beginning at a point approximately three hundred feet northeast of the center line. Of the intersection of Cliff and Vernon Street. And continuing approximately forty feet in a southeast direction. National Grid to trench and install one-to-three-inch conduit, concrete encased. From MH four to customer-owned landhold, house number twenty-four.
Well, seconded, and seconded, any discussion on motion? Yes, go, go ahead, John.
This is actually a hearing, so we've got to invite anyone who is in opposition or in. A four, I should say, the, uh, the motion, so we should, we need to invite anyone to provide testimony essentially.
Absolutely.
There's no one, that's fine, but we need to put it out there.
Anybody on, want to raise a hand somehow? Hit Tony with a chat or something?
I got nothing on, on the chat.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, there was no public comment, uh, at this point. All in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Jean, can't the eye?
Mark, calling and I. All right, thanks, John. Uh, I bet, I bet you like these Zoom meetings. You don't have to travel around the state, huh?
No, I just, I just cover the North Shore, so I don't mind coming up here, so, but thank you very much.
All right, thanks, John, yeah. Um, okay, um, next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Evaluation. And the Board of Selectmen's, um, twenty-twenty-one goals, uh. We've been working on this for, uh, a while, um. Individually, the members of the board, uh, Josh, uh, agreed to put it all together into a document. Um, that we can share, um, with the Town Administrator and the public. Uh, we went to, um. You know, when, in our evaluation of Tony, we looked at his communication skills, his administrative skills. His, um, his financial skills. Uh, you know, setting, um, setting goals and priorities, capital planning. Uh, we took a look at all of that. And Josh, I know you put a lot into this and do you want to, um. Do you want to, um, summarize it, if you would?
Um, yes, I don't know, Tony, if, uh, you want to share it on the screen or, um, I would welcome that. Uh, we won't, it's pretty lengthy, so, uh.
All right, hold on one sec.
So I can, while that comes up, I can, um, begin to summarize. Um, you know, when, uh, Tony came on board in the summer of, um, two thousand and eighteen, um. he came into a challenging situation. The financial condition of the town needed to improve. I know Tony worked pretty hard advocating for the override and fortunately, I believe the voters from Nahat approved that override and Tony set about getting our financial situation in order. And I think today we'll see at town meeting that we're in a better position than we were when Tony arrived. Think so now that it's on the screen, you know, I think we all agree that Tony's doing an excellent job. And most importantly, is continuing to improve as, as he gains experience. Tony brings a great approach to the job. It's certainly not a nine-to-five job. And Tony definitely takes the whatever it takes to get the job done attitude. What's in some long days and that's not easy for a young father. So we certainly appreciate that approach to the job. I mentioned the budget and finances and that's on a very positive trend. Infrastructure also when Tony came aboard, as I think many of the citizens know, our infrastructure needed attention, particularly a sewer and water, as we learned, we're reminded yet again today with the water break in Little Nahat. And Tony's faced up to that challenge and we still have a long way to go, but at least things are coming coming into you know, to the point where we're starting to get some of that stuff done. We'll, we'll see some of that on the goals. You know, we've we've put some of those improvements explicitly in the goals for 2021. As far as management, Tony maintains a good relationship with all the staff here in town and you know, we're seeing the the positive benefits of that. Communication, I think this is the area we think, you know, is the best opportunity for Tony to improve. Definitely on the positive trend here. We note that there've been a number of concrete improvements in that area, the new Facebook Town Hall Facebook page. You know, good use of the electronic sign at the end of the causeway. This new smartphone app that I think we may talk about later in the this meeting. So all those things, the robo calls are all helping to keep our citizens informed. So we're all, we've all been really happy to see those, want to bring those into play recently. Obviously, this year has been a difficult year with the COVID-19 and Tony's really done an outstanding job working with Deb Murphy, our, our town nurse, and John Kulan, our health inspector. And you know, I know the citizens have been very appreciative of these actions and and just keeping us all safe. So thanks for the leadership role with regard to COVID-19. So this also is lengthy. Hopefully, people can see this on the screen, but we, we've broken down all the goals for this coming year into different categories, budget and finance. Communication, let's see what else. You have to keep scrolling. Yeah, general government administration and infrastructure. So these are all listed here. Perhaps we can make these available on the website in the future as well, but it's we tried to make these goals tangible and measurable and we will make sure to make this annual review process you know, formal and measure Tony's performance against these goals. I think if people scan down through these goals, they would agree that these are the top priorities for the town. Incidentally, these goals are a collection of of goals that were recommended by Tony himself, by Chairman Colin and Suckman Canty and me. And we've sort of collected them all into one list and combined. There's quite a bit of overlap, as you might expect on some of these things. So there they are. Particularly, I think these infrastructure ones might be of interest to people. So first one is breaking ground on this. Actually, that's the second one. Breaking ground, no, some on there somewhere. It was starting on the sewer project on the Linway, you know, everyone knows what a thorn our side that has been. So it'll be good to see that get started. So that would be a summary. As I said, hopefully, we can get these goals up on the webpage and so thanks for really doing an excellent job, Tony. I know not only the Board of Selectmen appreciate it, but the citizens of the heart. So and also the employees. So thanks a lot.
Josh, thank you for pulling this all together. Thank you, Gene, for your contributions too. Congratulations, Johnny, Tony. I think everybody recognizes the effort that you put in over the last year, above and beyond getting hit with COVID and dealing with everything else that you're dealing with. You certainly got an A plus in, in, in my, my book. So congrats. And I'm sure that next year we'll see similar, similar work from you. So congratulations. Gene?
Yeah, just a couple and maybe just one, but a great assessment. And again, as Mike said, Josh, thank you so much for all the work you put into this because it wasn't easy to combine the three of us. But the only thing I'd like to see for the future when we're doing these is that there's more measured activities or specific items run up against the performance of those particular items. So that it's not so objective. It's more subjectivity put into it. But just a great report and Tony, great job. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to mention that we're going to be reviewing this probably on quarterly basis as we go through the year. And so it's not going to be just a one snapshot. And then at the end of the year, we're going to say, this is how you did, Tony. Hopefully, every quarter, we can sit down and and take a look at how you're doing, if we can give you any more help in some areas that you may need. Some, some major concerns that you may have, some adjustments in some of these goals and objectives that you might suggest. Those things change over the year. We, we recognize that. So we'll be doing this, you know, every quarter, hopefully. Thanks.
You know, if I could add one thing to that, and that is I'm hopeful that we can, we can carry this over to department heads as well.
Yeah. Go ahead, Tony.
I just wanted to, you know, to you, Mr. Chairman and, and Selectmen Antrim, Selectmen Canty, and to the employee, you know, I really appreciate this evaluation. I appreciate the positive feedback. I appreciate the, the, the areas noted for improvement and I appreciate, you know, putting out these goals. I think these are all shared goals of not just mine, but yours and the town's. And, you know, it's, it's a great place to work. I couldn't, you know, it's, it's a dream come true, you know, to be from the town you grow up in, to be in this position and, you know, looking forward to. Of course, we would have enjoyed to accomplish more at this time in my tenure, but you know, with COVID, it certainly kind of changed our priorities, but still you know, I, it's, it's it's easy, it's, it's easy when you enjoy where you're going to work, when you, when you're surrounded by positivity, positive team, you know, we have such a good team employees, from employees to volunteers to, you know, it's just generally, everybody cares and goes above and beyond for the town. And you don't have that everywhere. So you know, I appreciate all your comments. And I'm looking forward to, to getting started and knocking, knocking a few of these things off the list.
And as Gene said to Tony, that I'm sure you'll take these goals and objectives and bring them down to the ladder to your department heads. So that there's a continuity there and they're all working on the same issues and the same goals.
Exactly. That'll be my next step. So now that we have, you know, from top down, the goals of the, the overall goals for the town through the Board of Selectmen to me, I now will transfer these into smaller goals for each of my department heads and expand upon them. And then, you know, so likewise, it'll, I'll be evaluating that on an annual basis as well. So absolutely.
Good. Thank you, Tony. We're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We're going to move on to another presentation by National Grid. This is a presentation on the status of Little Nahat. And Faith, you're here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Tony, will you be able to bring up the presentation?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking for it right now.
Cool. Well, good evening, good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me, Town Administrator Tony, Board of Selectmen and the community. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. Wish it was in person, but here I am in my room. So thank you very much. And
Coming right up.
Cool. Excellent. Okay, so next slide. So for the agenda tonight, for what we're going to go over, I'm just going to talk about electrically, how Nahat is fed, both Little Nahat and Big Island of Nahat. I'm going to talk about the, how many outages has Nahat experienced, both Little Nahat, Big Island of Nahat, and what national, what steps National Grid is taking moving forward.
And Faith, if I can just, you know, provide a little bit of background too, real quick. The, you know, our residents in Little Nahat have experienced, you know, some decent amount of long-term, I guess, or long temporary, but longer than usual outages consistently over the past couple of years. And I reached out to the Board of Selectmen, which then reached out to me and I reached out to Faith. And, and you know, Faith's been working on doing a deeper dive as to, you know, what's leading to the concerns of the residents and what's, and what's leading to these issues. So she, you know, in talking with me, talking with Zach, our DPW director, superintendent, and, and, and working with the Board of Selectmen has put together this presentation to show the community, you know, where those issues lie, try to help explain the story and what a solution looks like moving forward.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, why don't we jump to the next slide?
Yes, please. So how is Nahat fed electrically? So as many of you probably do know, you have two underground what we call feeds into Nahat, which is indicated by the kind of like dotted purple, but also orange line. That just the dotted of, the dottedness of the line just indicates that it's underground. So that feed comes in and we tap off of that feed to feed Little Nahat. We have step-down transformers on Little Nahat Road. And that is what feeds all of Little Nahat. That those two feeds continue up to the substation, the Nahat substation, and then from there we step down the electricity for distribution, similar to the step-down transformers at Little Nahat, so that we can distribute it safely to the customers. So there are two feeds that feed the Big Island of Nahat. We have the green one, which we call the 79J1, and then the pink one, which we call the 79J2. Next slide. So I pulled data for the last three years. So on the left, you see Little Nahat outages, and then on the right, you see Big Nahat outages. So Little Nahat has experienced 14 outages since 2018. And I included all of the causes. So we have had four tree issues. We have had four devices that have failed. We've had two windstorm issues, three cable faults, and then one unknown. So that could be you know, a squirrel makes contact and unfortunately, the squirrel doesn't make it. When our troubleshooter gets out there, he sees the fuse is blown. There's no squirrel in sight. Anything like that. The Big Island of Nahat, they've experienced 27 outages since 2018, 11 of which were tree issues. There were four device insulation failures, four related to deterioration. Four were actually related to an upgrade or maintenance that we have to provide. So we actually have to take an outage on one or both of the feeders in order to safely upgrade or maintain the system. Two were wind or storm issues, and two were actually motor vehicle accidents. So, but before we go to what's next steps that we're taking, sorry, Tony. So I think one thing that I just want to talk about and you know, review, so like Little Nahat and Big Nahat are fed differently, like I had shown in the first slide. Little Nahat has the overhead step-down transformers. And Big Island of Nahat has the substation that feeds the rest of the island. So I, I do know that in Little Nahat, a few months ago, we did have a 27-hour outage, which is not something we ever want. And that was related to a tree issue, but we also had difficulty getting the equipment that we needed. And that was immediately raised to upper management. And we do have backups now for the step-down transformers that feed Little Nahat. Several backups. And we're either going to store them at the little, at the Nahat substation so that it will be an even quicker even quicker way for us to, you know, fix the device if, if it was to happen again. Or it'll be stored at our, our Linway substation. So a lot closer than our Malden, Sutton or North Andover offices. Because we know that, you know, it was not a good look. It, you know, that was detrimental to our customers and it was an unfortunate situation, but we are going to rectify it moving forward. The other thing to note is that, so on the Little Nahat outages, you see three cable faults. And you don't see that on the Big Island of Nahat. So because the Big Island of Nahat is fed by a substation, there's a piece of equipment within the substation that automatically switches when it detects a fault or no voltage on one of the two feeders that feed into Nahat. Because Little Nahat is fed by an overhead step-down transformer, that is not an automatic switch over. So you do still have the redundancy by having two feeds into Little Nahat. But an actual troubleshooter, a one-man crew comes out and he has to make the switch in person. So it could take 40 minutes, it could take 60 minutes. You know, a long enough outage, but for the Big Island of Nahat, you would just see a 30-second blip, you know, all of your clocks would reset. You know, surge protectors would go off. So it's something that we're working on. So now, next slide, Keith. Thank you. So what steps are we taking? So as you can see, trees is an issue for, for both Little Nahat and Big Nahat. We are going to be trimming out some of Little Nahat this coming year. And we also have a hazard tree program that we're assessing to see if any of that program would be able to help take out any hazard trees that are within the vicinity of our lines to avoid something like that happened where the tree fell, hit our transformer and, and damaged it. So and then full trimming will happen in our fiscal year 2023 for Big Island and Little Nahat, anything that wasn't trimmed this year for the Little Island of Nahat. And then, like I had mentioned, the additional equipment that we now have, and we will either store at the Nahat substation or Lynn substation. And then there is something else that Tony and I and And then there is something else that Tony and I and, and Zach have been talking about. So, I know I mentioned the, the automatic switch that Big Island of Nahat has, that the Little, Little Island of Nahat doesn't have. So, there is a way to get an automatic switch installed. Usually, those conversations die rather quickly because we do need property in order to install the underground equipment that we would need. We need a transformer and a switchgear. But Tony, Zach and I have met, and we are in talks about that, and, you know, they are advocating for something like that for you. And they have been very helpful, and luckily, the conversation didn't die like it usually does. But.
I briefed the selectmen on that as well. And, you know, speaking on behalf of the board, they were all open to the idea of utilizing some of the property in the area right off of the causeway to provide this improvement for their residents in Little Nahat.
Excellent. Yeah, so, and, so, if we, you know, if you remember the, the outages, so those three cable faults that came up on Little Nahat, those would then just be thirty-second blips. Unfortunately, the rest of the outages, you know, tree-related transformer being damaged. Even if you install that automatic trip, uh, switch, those outages still would have happened, and the automatic switch wouldn't have eliminated those. But with additional tree trimming, that hazard tree program that we're gonna review, you know, there are things that we're doing. We are closely watching Little Nahat because we know you have had that significant outage of twenty-seven hours. And if I could just make one plug for tree trimming, the system is only as strong as, as the, as the trees are trimmed, and, you know, if one of our consultants or if our supervisor comes by to permission a tree, you know, I would just ask that if everybody could be open to the idea of us trimming trees. It's really the most thing for our buck when it comes to reliability. And, you know, if we get every other tree, then when a branch falls in between, you'll have a, a power outage. So, you know, we're happy to work with the customers and make sure that, you know, we're trimming it to the proper specs and making sure that we're caring for the tree while we do do the trimming. But, yeah, that would be my one plug. So, the next slide would be questions. Any questions, concerns, anything I missed?
Thank you, Faith, for that, that update. You know, Tony did talk to us about putting that new equipment at the end of the causeway. We're certainly in favor of trying to improve the service to Little Nahat as any way we can. We need to be sensitive, and Tony understands this very well, about the location of that. It's at the end of the causeway. We can't, apparently, we can't put it behind that wall, right?
Unfortunately, not.
It's subject to coastal storms there, so that's an issue. So, I, I, I'm sure that with some proper landscaping and and siding, it's, it's, it's very possible that we could do that.
There's also, you know, by, by doing that project, you're also removing some unsightly transformers that are up in the air. So, when you turn off of Nahat Road up on Little Nahat Road, there's three poles that have probably two cans on each pole. It's pretty busy. It's pretty busy looking. So, that, those would become much simpler, you know, poles with just wires on them, and, and be a much cleaner look to the neighborhood as well.
Okay, that, that was my question. So, it, it, thanks, Faith, again, for coming. But, um, so, those transformers on Little Nahat Road that Tony just mentioned, I think there's one pole with three and one pole with one, if I recall correctly. So, do those transformers go away?
If we go down this path, yes, they would be removed. And there are also the two switches, I think on the first and second pole potentially. So, those large, kind of like spidery devices, those would also be removed as well.
Okay, so that would all be in the new switchgear that stepped down the function would all be in the new switchgear box?
Correct.
Great. That is, that is great. So, two other items related are the condition of a couple of those poles that have the one right on the corner has, you know, quite a bit of lean to it. The one right around, around the corner, it's painted green on the bottom with an X on it.
Okay.
That looks like it could, should be replaced. And there's, and then there's the matter of where the wires cross the road. There's rags hanging from the wires down there. So, if the wires are too low, can we fix them? And if they're not too low, can we take the rags off?
Yes. Yeah, so I can't remember if it was in January or February. We did install an additional guy wire off of that corner pole. I think it was pole nine or ten, or maybe it was nine, Little Nahat Road. Where, so that guy wire is, it's designed so that it'll pull back the pole, to like, straighten it out a little bit. So that it'll raise the, the lines up. But I'll, I'll follow up on the.
I did see that, that new guy wire, and it, just to my eye, it looked like it did raise the height of that wire a bit. I think in concert with potentially replacing that pole that's painted green on the bottom, that would probably do the job, so.
I can definitely follow up on all those. So, Little Nahat Road, the corner pole, then the pole with the painted green on the bottom with the X, and then get rid of the rag.
Yeah. Are the, you know, the most egregious offenders. Let's put it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you have other ones, feel free. Tony has my contact as well. If you see one that you're just concerned about, I can definitely get an engineer like John out there to review it and get it in the pipeline to replace, so.
Faith, I have a, a, a general policy question for National Grid. And you may be able to answer it, you may not, and you can come back. But the issue of double poles. And there are a number of them, not only in Little Nahat, but throughout the town. And I, I understand that, you know, that the purpose of the double pole was, it's supposed to be temporary. Some of them have been there for decades. So, what is National Grid's policy on cleaning that up?
So, it's definitely a joint effort. So, we, when we replace a pole, I guess we'll start, we'll start backwards. So, several years ago, the territory was split up between Verizon and National Grid. So, some communities, Verizon was a set-only community, and they would set the poles, and National Grid would remove the poles. Some communities, National Grid would set the poles, Verizon would remove the poles. We've come to an agreement with Verizon that we have to set all poles because we also have to be the first people to transfer off the pole before anybody else can transfer. So, there's a pecking order of how we have to have all of the utilities removed. So, electric always has to go first, so there's enough clearance. And then, streetlights, and then fire alarm, and then Comcast, and then Verizon. And now with that new agreement, once Verizon transfers off, they pull the pole out. And take it with them. I can definitely pull the, there's a, a system that we use that collects all the data on all the double poles, and I'm, I'm happy to pull that report and find out what the holdups are. And if National Grid hasn't gotten off of them, I can certainly move those along and work with Comcast and Verizon as well.
Yeah, I believe that National Grid probably has this on GIS. Could you send that GIS to, to Tony, indicating where all the double poles are?
For sure.
We could, we could post that, Tony. We could track that as we go, go along. Do you have any comments?
No, good. There, there, there is a question in the chat, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Ruthie Merrill, the seventy-one Lenox Road. I wanna say thank you for National Grid coming and addressing a very dangerous branch that was in a neighbor's road, and they were just great to get it down really fast. We were all just watching it, just watch it fall, and it didn't because y'all came and got it. I also wanna thank the Board of Selectmen for working on these transformers. It's scary driving up Little Nahat Road right there. Especially those transformers just look like they're so archaic. So, I was calling, I was originally wanting to ask a question, but Josh kinda addressed everything by asking you if you're going to update them. So, I just wanna say thank you to the Selectmen and then National Grid.
Of course.
I changed from a complaint to a compliment.
I, it's.
Hold on a second. I didn't, sorry, Anna. Anna, hold on. Try to unmute. There you go.
Okay. Hi, I'm also from Little Nahat, and, yeah, these outages have been a nightmare for lots of us. And because we had so many of them, and long, long, long. And so, it's a good, good thing that those big transformers that have gone up in fireworks, and that's damn scary because they can really cause major fires. And two of them right around my neighborhood. And there are pictures of that, and it's so scary. So, anyway, those old transformers, according to National Grid, the technicians that were out here, they said they are not made anymore. And I hope that we go away from them, and that National Grid has a plan to just bring in new transformers, whatever, the new technology. And, you know, we have this new, better system, because really, we don't need any of this. And thank you for addressing it.
Thank you, Anna.
And so, up Little Nahat Road, the poles, because we have very, very high winds, and maybe it would be a consideration to go underground, because really, we have quite the high winds. And those poles are leaning a lot. So, I don't know what would be the best solution, but I'd like to just let you know that it's a concern.
Thank you, Anna. It is a concern. I know that certainly, every, I'm sure that there's not a resident in the hat that wouldn't like all of the wires underground. And hopefully someday we'll get there. But the problem with that at the moment is that it's very expensive to do that. And the cost for that would be on the town to do it. There are some sort of enterprise zones, I think, where a neighborhood zone where neighbors could pitch in and do it or something. But it's, it's, it's an issue that hopefully we can get to someday. But right now, I think, Tony, you can talk about this. But the cost of doing, putting a lot of this stuff underground is probably exceeds the the ability of the town's budget at this point. But it's certainly something we should try to strive towards as we move forward.
So, basically, I was just saying, it's the Nahat Road turns into Little Nahat Road. This is just the beginning. That's where the winds are just crazy.
Yeah. Well, I, I was hearing that those, those poles will be coming down.
Well, the poles, though, the poles would, the poles would, would be, if we are able to put this new switch underground piece into the ground there, it's the the top of the poles where you have all the equipment that's up there, that would be removed. You'd still have poles, but they would just be simple. But that's the area that we're talking about. And, and if I can just ask residents, Anna, I don't, I didn't catch your last name or address, and for everyone else on the call, if I can remind people to state your name and, and address.
Anna Martin, nineteen, Howe Road.
Howe Road, okay.
We have any more questions, Tony?
Vi, did you, you had a couple comments in the chat?
Oh, I, I just wanna indicate there's a double pole at the corner of Furbush and Willow. And then Mark had a question.
Yeah, I asked the first question. We just, we noticed at the corner of Willow and and Furbush, they came very quickly to replace a pole when we called up and said, this pole is leaning much way over. And they did that, but then we, we've still got the leaning pole with Verizon's and Comcast's stuff on it. It's been over a year. So, my question really was, does the town have any leverage to help force these other companies to get with it and move their, move their stuff? I mean, National Grid did their part very quickly, but and I guess, you know, Josh mentioned other double poles. I think that's part of the problem, is that there's no, no big incentive for Verizon and Comcast to come along and move their stuff.
Do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll pull that double pole report, and I, I have contacts similar to me. I forgot to even mention my name. My name's Faith Hassel, and I'm in Community Relations at National Grid. So, I do have contacts at Comcast and Verizon that would be able to help me expedite the remainder of the double poles if it's Comcast or Verizon. So, I'm happy to, you know, initiate that, and I'll, I'll keep Tony in the loop. And, and you said it was Furbush at Willow, correct?
Yeah, we, I can try to get it, unless you, unless Vi or Mark, you have a pole number, I, we can try and get one for you, Faith.
That's okay. I'll be able to find it from that.
Yeah, it's Furbush and Willow, and they did the replacement last year.
I appreciate you bringing it up. I'll definitely keep up with the double pole report and continue to push things along for sure.
Just, just to be clear, Faith, the responsibility for coordinating the removal of, of everything from pole goes through National Grid? I mean, the, the town doesn't have to contact Comcast and Verizon.
Usually, it just comes, usually it comes through me. The system notifies somebody. So, the system automatically notifies people at, at every stage of the removal. So, if Comcast was next to go, somebody at Comcast would get that notification. But when something like this happens, and the town escalates it as an issue, you know, I'm happy to just run with it.
Just for your record, the, the fire alarm wires on our poles, I think the fire alarm wires are the top wire, right?
They're right below the streetlights.
Yeah. Well, that's not functioning, so. Our pole box is a bit removed a long time ago, so.
Good to know. Thank you.
So, Faith, what would be next steps regarding the underground equipment for Little Nahat?
Good question. So, because of your graciousness and being able to continue this conversation, I will have a couple of calls in the next few weeks to find out what are the next steps to, you know, first design it, work with you on obtaining the proper easements. And, and if we need some sort of licensing. And then, we'll fund it, and then it'll get approval, and then we'll go to installation. I unfortunately don't have a timeline because it hasn't even been designed yet.
Right.
But, you know, like I said earlier, we are definitely closely watching Little Nahat and doing everything that we can to address, address this issue.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We got a whole section of town that's excited and grateful, I think.
Thank you very much for the time. I really appreciate it. And again, anything that comes up, double poles, you know, any types of issues that, electric or gas, I do cover gas as well. Feel free to reach out. And, yeah, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Faith. Appreciate it. Thanks, Tony, for putting that together. We have another presentation, a lot of presentations tonight. So, this is on MVP. Drop each access.
Yes.
Trey Ruthvin, did I pronounce that correctly?
You got it correct. Thank you very much.
All right, Tony, wanna tee this off first?
Yes. Trey is from Applied Coastal. Applied Coastal is hired by the town to work to, util, by, through utilizing grant funding from the MVP program. So, two, three years ago, the town became an MVP community. And we were, we first secured funding to produce a vulnerability plan or report, and then produce a vulnerability plan or report. And then we secondly got money for an action grant to tackle one of our bigger issues along the hot road and in the lowlands area. And we hired Trey from Applied Coastal to, to work on this project. The overall, the simple, I'll, I'll give the simple one sentence explanation. Trey can go through this, this presentation, but when our, the height of our dune is at one level and the access points, so the path that folks take to get down to the beach is lower than that. So if we have a storm surge that isn't quite tall enough to get over the height of the dune, it still floods Spring Road, Nahut Road. And debris's come through those access points. So while the entire height of the dune is in need of being increased, a short-term approach that will help tremendously is to bring the height of the access points to this, you know, in line with the height of the rest of the dune and have compliant access according to, you know, with, with CZM recommendations and whatnot. So that's, that's the short story. Trey, I'll, I'll let you take that, take it from here.
All right. Thank you. So yeah, we were looking at the three access points, starting at Spring Road and then moving westward along. So just to refresh everybody's memory, this is a March fourth photo from two thousand eighteen after the first nor'easter. There was two more in quick succession after that. But you can already see the damage done. You can see the equipment on the hot road cleaning up. You can see the water in the park behind just basically being held. And that's all from, you know, storm surge and wave run up. Next slide, please. This is just a little further down at the light saving station. And I'll talk about the life-saving station a little bit at the end. But one thing I just want to point out now, since we're on this photo, is you can see that garage building that is basically, it's sitting on the beach. We've had a number of talks about this over the course, even though this is specifically an area we're looking at. But it is something that towns are going to need to address, whether that's moving that building, tearing it down or something, because the idea of actually putting material or a structural or some way of dealing with storm surge, seaward of that that would be, you know, A, really difficult to permit, B, really hard to maintain and C, truly expensive, even when you consider the cost of moving a historic building. Everybody can see that.
When you mean the building, you're talking about the garage.
The garage, not, not the, you know, old light saving house. It's just the garage that's literally sitting on the beach. I mean, that, that building is sitting on the area that yet used to be the dune. It was flattened out and smoothed down, which is great for access, but really bad for coastal resiliency. You know, with a building like that, you can see the stone marks from the cobbles, you know, during storms. But it's also just a pathway. And that's, you know, really the critical part is that, you know, once you have these pathways, especially in areas like this where you have a concrete walkway, it's a, it's a ramp for water to come up. It actually helps accelerate it onto the road and causes, you know, inland damage. So yeah, the idea would be to take that building and, you know, you could reposition in the parking lot closer to the road. You could talk about different areas in town to move it to. You know, there's a lot of possibilities to consider, but it will be something I'll bring up at the end for next steps. Next. So I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on this. I'm sure you guys are all familiar. So on the top figure, that's a wave rose and a wave period rose. Just so you're aware of what it's showing, you'll see the little pie pieces. They go from white out to black. And basically what that signifies is wave heights. As the percentage gets larger, your piece gets, you know, bigger as a pie piece. And so this is really just showing everything you know is that, you know, northeast storms and east storms are, you know, really what affects Nahaw. And then you get significant wave fights, you know, over ten and periods over ten seconds, which is big. The next figure down is a wind rose. And that shows that you get, you know, winds from all directions. Obviously, you know, winds out of the northwest are the most significant, but you know, with the coastline as it is, you're protected from waves from that. So that's not really a flooding concern. It's just really those easterly, northeasterly events. Next slide. So this is just kind of a brief explanation. So we're all talking the same language. You can see the various lines representing different tide levels. And then as you get to the top, you can see waves set up and waves swash. So you'll have, if you're looking at FEMA, FEMA uses still water elevations as a reference a lot. That still water elevation is what's expected during the return period storm that they're referencing. So it'd be the, you know, the one, the ten, twenty-five, fifty, hundred year storm. Once you put wave setup and wave run up on it, those go above that still water elevation. And you can see that on the coast. And what causes that is as the waves come to shore, it pushes water up the coast and it comes up, which is really what we're going to talk about when we talk about these access points and why they're so vulnerable. You just zoomed, just paged down a little bit that table, Tony. So you can see the offshore wave fights, offshore periods, wind speeds. But really what I want to talk about is the mean run up on that far right column. So those are actually in elevations in feet NAVD. And when we go to the next slide, we're going to look at elevations. But you can see there like the one-year storm. So a one-year storm happens, you know, literally every year, multiple times a year. It's a very common occurrence. Even the ten-year storm is not really unheard of of happening, you know, every couple of years. But you can see that, you know, between ten and fourteen point six, you know, these are wave setups, pretty common events. So if we go to the next slide, what I wanted to highlight here, and you can see the three access points, they, I don't have a pointer, but Tony can move his.
Here across from, you know, at the island of Castle Road. And then right in the middle, across from the parking lot and, you know, at Spring Road.
So the, the thing to notice about those access points is that the elevations, you know, they vary slightly, but they're basically between ten and twelve feet. So we're right within the range of where we get, you know, wave setup on an annual basis if not, you know, and definitely for the larger storms. The crest of the dune all the way along peaks out just over fifteen, so fifteen point five. But on average, it's mid-fourteens. You know, if we talk about long-term sustainability, we would want to talk about increasing the height. But right now, if we can close up those gaps and then work on the life-saving station, all of a sudden we have a solid wall against those storm surge events coming up. And what that would do is prevent that water from, you know, egressing from the seaward side into landward side where we're filling up the park and getting, you know, material on the road to prevent that. So we started looking at how to go about that while preserving access for the public. Next slide. So here, we're going to go through three cross-sections. This first one's at Spring Road. The top slide or the top cross-section shows you what's existing. The bottom cross-section shows you what's proposed. For Spring Street, we're going to raise up the dune just over elevation fifteen. And right now we're talking about putting a wood access staircase in just due to the space we have available. That could also, what you'll see in the next two is that we're using mats to provide access for various reasons on those. But a matte access could be done here. The perks of using a matte access is it's more cost-effective. It can actually be removed over the winter. So it provides access and, you know, sustainability. But also, you know, I understand the need for, you know, wood staircases. It's allows people to get a higher view. It's permanently in place. So people can access the beach all times of the year. The one thing you might have to consider is at this location with the waves wrapping around is that the seaward side of the staircase, you might consider a removable staircase there. That could either be, you know, wood or aluminum structure that lifts out eventually. Just for storms, that way you actually provide, prevent, you know, long-term maintenance costs of actually replacing those seaward stairs on a repetitive basis.
So Trey, so for us, this is Spring Road.
Correct.
And the reason we're looking at a little bit of a different approach for Spring Road is because the seaward side of the access point is fairly steep.
Correct. It's steeper. It's a little rockier. We also have less length overall to put the features in place. The staircase would, in that area, actually also erodes fairly quickly just due to being ended the littoral system. So littoral system is how sand moves across that beach. It's a pocket beach, so you know, concentrates in the center and the sides get less and less material. So this would actually be the best solution here. You could do the other one, but there's, we'll talk about those matte issues which would then pertain to this one.
And, and there's no reason why we couldn't do like an elevated ramp instead of stairs.
You could do an elevated ramp. The one, the one thing to consider, whether it's this one or any of the others together, we just have to provide ADA access at some point throughout the beach. I think it's within a mile is the guideline on ADA access. So if we end up with the mats at the either of the two or both of those, this one could be stairs or a ramp. Right now I'm just showing stairs, but the idea can be modified very easily.
Well, I think our, our, certainly like we have a priority of ADA towards the life-saving station. That's where the, that's where, you know, the, it's flatter. There's parking, closer parking, the restrooms are available there. But that being said, the reason I asked about ramp is, you know, most people wheel their beach equipment, you know, whether it be a cooler or a, or a a, you know, a cart, you know, that has their beach chairs and stuff. So that's why I ask about, you know, even, even here, if it wasn't ADA, but still having a ramp would be help, helpful to residents in town.
Sure. And that's the, the second ramp or the second access point has that design. The one thing I would caution against, you know, as we're considering, you know, alternatives, is that we want to keep the staircase perpendicular to the dune, not parallel. Because as soon as we turn it parallel, you know, we increase the likelihood that the waves will come up and actually uplift it as, you know, future erosion occurs. And so that would make that more susceptible. So the one thing we'd have to just kind of quickly evaluate is, you know, what are ramp slopes are there and make sure that they're, you know, gentle enough that, you know, people with carts aren't feeling, you know, the pressure, you know, going uphill or going downhill where it's the unsafe.
So we'll keep, we'll keep working on this one, on this.
So this is the access point across from the hot heritage trail. And, you know, the one thing I've noticed while being out on site is that, you know, as you just said, I saw, you know, numerous people with wagons or, you know, similar type carts taking all their gear from their cars. And then, you know, following the trail up and over onto the beach to gain access. So this is where we'd end up with a, you know, wider mat that allows, you know, two-way access so people can come on and off the beach. The nice thing about using a mat over this dune as we raise it up is that, you know, this mat could be, you know, removed or put at the top of the dune over winter time. So, you know, when we're having storms, we're not going to damage it. It could actually very easily be removed and put in a garage. So there's no UV degradation. And they're very easy to install. I've talked to the manufacturers and, you know, even putting it out every year is, you know, quite simple. They latch together. So actually, in this case, we'd have a series of mats attached together to make the distance as we need. The other aspects that we're going to add, especially these access points, is that we'd have the symbolic fencing that you have along a lot of the beach. So you'd have the four-by-four posts and the rope following the mat right along. In addition, we're going to re-vegetate the dune immediately next to the mat. Because the idea is if we get the vegetation in place, we also stop erosion from occurring at such a rapid rate. We can, one thing I was initially worried about, but I was actually very surprised on several site visits is that, you know, I'm aware that we have the benches across the crest of the dune along with the pathway. I have to say, the residents of Nahaw are amazing compared to a lot of other sites we visit. You know, the pathway is still vegetated. People seem not to vary off it very well. They all seem to stay on it. So we're not having a lot of damage. So we could continue that access since it's not turning out to be a major erosion or a damage factor. The one thing we could do also to, you know, stabilize those points where we're in natural vegetation is, you know, switch from beech grass to plum rose or other type woody vegetation that has a little bit of a pricker to it. You know, the idea is not to actually prick anybody, but to keep people, you know, in the areas where we're expecting access and we can easily maintain and prevent, you know, dips in elevation. And so the third one was a little more interesting. And the criteria for this one was that DPW and the fire department wanted vehicular access down to the beach for rescues and also beach raking and, you know, all sorts of assorted issues. And so we've been able to find a matte system and talk with Moby Matts that, you know, can carry this type of equipment across the beach, the slopes that we were generating. We've checked and, you know, it's not an issue for people walking. It's not an issue for, you know, the fire truck with the pickup and a trailer, you know, to access the beach or the beach rake. So we're able to, you know, generate access, raise the level of the dune to prevent, you know, water intrusion. So that was actually, you know, a little concerned, but it turned out very well. Once again, we're going to, you know, put symbolic fencing in to keep people from, you know, venturing left and right across the dune and also re-vegetate these areas where we've lost vegetation in these spots. The other thing which I failed to mention on the previous two is that there is a currently a paved walkway coming off the sidewalk. The idea would be to cut that off. We probably continue for a few feet off the paved walkway, but then go to a natural material. Once again, is, you know, if we can get rid of these hard surfaces that accelerate water landward, it's just actually benefiting the town in the long run. And we can go to, you know, a natural service that's, you know, firm that allows people to walk over or continue the Moby mats all the way out to where the pavement joins it. Down. Down one. Next one. So I just wanted to quickly show, you know, kind of examples of mats and how they're used. Obviously, the top is a two-way access point. On the bottom, you can see that, you know, we're moving heavy equipment across the beach. In both these areas, we have a raised dune and access is not an issue at all. You know, talking with the fire department, they had a very specific request also, as we talked about removing mats, is that they wanted the mat to remain in place all season. The one thing that was concerning is, is the forward face of the dune obviously will be susceptible to erosion. Talking to the manufacturer, the seaward section literally could be rolled up, you know, as a roll carpet per se and lashed down at the top of the dune. And so if access was needed at any point where we're not having regular beach access, the fire department could literally unlatch it and it would roll it down. They said, you know, to do that would be a matter of, you know, a minute or two. It's just really the unlatching and then pushing it down to allow access to the beach. So this way we can, you know, step back, you know, minimize our maintenance, but also provide, you know, the public protection that we need in this area for, you know, emergencies or, you know, other issues. Next slide is.
Compromise.
Pardon me?
I like that. That's like, that's a good compromise still being able to, so that if they have a, a ocean rescue emergency, you know, in the wintertime, they can just unroll it and, and deploy their equipment onto the beach.
Yeah, it's quite simple.
Next slide?
Yeah, next slide. It's just next steps. So currently we're working on developing our next MVP grant proposal, which would actually fund permitting and construction dollars for the three access points. That's due later in March. March, yeah, March. And so that's currently ongoing. We're trying to get all those pieces in place and put together the most possible grant. We've spoken to the MVP program and they're excited that we're coming back in after having the first round of grants. This grant would be a two-year cycle. So what we've tried to do with available funds is get all the permitting in place, construction documents all done in the first year and, and the second year go to construction, which should not take long. We've spoken with DPW and they're actually looking forward to doing this project. The one aspect that they might not would be if we end up with a ramp or a staircase system, we're still debating on if it'd be best for the town to do that or if we would take that structure and bid it out and have it constructed. And yeah, that's basically it for the three access points. You know, as I mentioned before, is, you know, as soon as these three are done, or even before they're really done, is to start considering, you know, how are we going to address, you know, lifesaving station? Because that still leaves a weak point in the whole dune system. And, you know, I definitely realize that this is a harder issue that has a lot of public outreach required. When, you know, when we talk about, you know, moving that garage, restoring the dune in front of the lifesaving station. And the aspects that requires, because, you know, we have the public bathrooms. And if we move it, you know, why are we moving it close by to keep it there? Or are we trying to look, you know, maybe across at the park, you know? So these are a lot of issues where people are going to have a lot of different ideas. I just want to bring it up early, so, you know, everybody's aware and we can start, you know, considering his options, you know, and talking about him over coffee or whenever is a good time just to get all those ideas out. So when it's really time to go, we can have really productive conversations on that. Any questions?
Thank you, Trey, and thanks, Tony, for putting this together. Very informative. I have a few questions. I guess it's sequencing or timing. Ultimately, what we'd like to try to do is, you know, do some beach nourishment along Shaw Beach, along that barrier dune, in increasing the height of the dune. Would you do that prior to putting the access ramps in? Or would you put the access ramps in before? That's one question. And the second question is, if we are going to be nourished and bring sand in, would we do that by pumping it from offshore onto the dune or hauling it in?
So to deal with the first question, you know, obviously the access points and an overall nourishment to, you know, raise the crest of the dune, they could be happening simultaneously. The one thing is, you know, when we design a hard structure, so like the stairs or the ramps, we would build elevation into that structure or even nourish below it to the proposed elevation of the dune to allow that, you know, increase in elevation. The ramp systems, you know, they're easy to remove and easy to, you know, increase heights under them. So it's really a matter of, you know, how fast can the dune nourishment be permitted and funded versus, you know, the access points? The access points are obviously fairly small in volume and fairly easy in permitting. So, you know, my guess is that those will happen first just because of the speed of permitting and, you know, funding availability. Nourishing the beach, if you have a cobble beach or a mixed beach, mixed sediment beach. And so it's a composite of, you know, sand, gravel and cobble. And what I didn't bring up is that, you know, when we nurse the dune in those access spots, we're going to use a specific mix of natural, you know, material that covers all those bases. You know, the one thing that that allows us is to get that larger material in place, especially, you know, as we get coarser sand, gravel and cobble is that it's more stable. What we can't do in which where you get into issues with regulatory issues is if you take all the sand and you put it in the back and then you just take all the rock and put it in the front. They look at that as, you know, are we really armoring and, you know, there's lots of issues and oversight that goes in. And so when we find a natural source, we can have it fully mixed in, so it'll naturally sort itself. And you get all that material that you're naturally used to. When it comes to doing a larger nourishment, you know, obviously you sometimes have to mix on site, which, when I mean that, is that if you have a sand source saved from dredging or something like that, you can pump that to shore. A lot of times you can buy natural rounded cobble solely instead of getting the sand and truck that in. So your trucking costs are a little less because you're not bringing in the sand that way. And then, you know, mix it appropriately on site and place it. The biggest issue with using dredge material is how coarse is that material? You know, if we have, you know, fine grain material, you know, say something under a half a millimeter, that's really mobile. And once, you know, in a dune system, we don't want it really being, you know, highly mobile. Because if we have a storm and storm insurance comes up and the waves touch it, that material is then immediately pulled offshore and moved. And so you kind of lose the protection that you're trying to build. So the answer is really, we'd have to look at the material that you were, that's available, see how it matches up to existing beach grain size wise. And, you know, if it is partially finer, look at, you know, how can we augment that with material from, you know, upland sources?
Okay. It has, you know, I would say that over the past thirty to forty, thirty years, I mean, the beach was, it is probably half cobble at this point. It wasn't, it wasn't always like that. I mean, there's a reason they call it sandy beach. Thirty or forty years ago, it was primarily sand. I probably started seventy-eight really changed everything there.
And that's normal. As beaches run out of sand, you'll see the coarser material that's always naturally present, usually buried, started coming out and becoming more and more prevalent. But that coarser material is really what's going to hold up your dune system and it's the most stable. So, you know, the idea is that, you know, if you build that into the dune, you're generating stability. The beach right now is fairly wide, and if you're looking at nourishing the beach to keep a bigger public access, you know, that can be, you know, you, you can end up with, we, we call them grain specifications. So you'd have one for the dune, you might have one for the upper beach. And then if we're actually nursing the beach, you would end up with one that's, you know, likely all sand, maybe a little bit of gravel, just to match the natural composition. But right now that we're looking at the dune, we really need that full mix.
Would you use other material like coconut wool types things and things like that?
Coconut rolls, you know, so jute or natural fibers, they're great in certain applications. You know, A, because they're not considered structures in the regulatory environment. And B, they provide temporary protection, but they do degrade due to UV, you know, degradation, waves and things like that. They're generally designed, especially if it's a roll, to actually break apart in a storm and actually dissipate wave energy by releasing all the sediment within it. Which means you then have to replace it. The nice thing with the system we have is we're actually using sand just to increase the dune. And then we have the access points, which we won't really need any to use any jute material. If we have, you know, a slope that's slightly unstable in some spot, we might use a small roll to help the vegetation take hold. But we're not using it as a structural component or a major factor.
Okay.
Hey, Mark?
Yeah?
If you can recall, maybe thirty, forty years ago, we got involved with a study by UMass on the algae. And in doing that, they deepened the study, they went out probably a couple of hundred yards, maybe three hundred yards, and they found this huge sandbank out there. And they suggested that that was being scoured off the beach and brought back out, particularly in the wintertime and building up and then literally drifting, literally L I T T O R, drifting back onto the beach, but not in the quantities to re-nourish it. You had approached that, if you recall, on pumping that back onto the beach. And the problem with it at that time, as it would be now, is cost. But they said that was perfect sand to bring back in because it was what we had on the beach to begin with.
I've been involved in a lot of pumping on the, along the coast of Massachusetts in my past life. And I would agree with Trey that it has, would have to be a composition. It couldn't be just, it would be too fine, I think, just to pump it up there. There would have to be a composition of that, but it could certainly be used. We did a lot of pumping in, back in the eighties, I was involved as the chief engineer. In Swatska, we pumped all of the vegetable material, a lot of Swatska harbor onto the beaches and it was somewhat successful. But I would agree with Trey that there would have to be a combination of efforts there.
And the one thing to keep in mind right now is, so what you're talking about is called sand mining. Sand mining is currently not allowed in Massachusetts. So if you're dredging within a dredge channel or you're allowed to use the, you know, obviously I'm taking the material out to dredge the channel and you're allowed to reuse it. If you're just going offshore to dredge sand for a beach nourishment project, you know, other types of issues where you might need fill, you're not going to get permits. There's been, you know, a number of, a number of other states do it, they do it very successfully. We're just not, you know, Massachusetts is just not at that point yet.
And mostly done in harbors like in Swatska, that's why we did it in Swatska.
Sure. And I mean, if you look at New Jersey, I mean, New Jersey dredges huge amounts of sand to rebuild their beaches and dunes. And that dredging is not maintenance dredging relative to navigation, some of it is. A lot of it's just, you know, look, finding offshore sand resources, dredging it and then pumping it onshore to provide those recreational and storm damage prevention. There's a few projects in the state where they're currently trying to convince the state to do that. And my suggestion would be to let those go first and deal with the cost and the time involved. And if at some point, you know, that becomes permissible in the state, Nahat could definitely take advantage of that. But at the moment, I would not recommend, you know, investing the time and money to try to pursue that.
I, I think what we're saying is we're very sensitive about the, if we're doing big material on from offsite, we'd be very sensitive about the makeup of that material. We have examples, we have examples like we've had beach and with the beach where the material was, was not a good match. Let me simply say that.
I just wanted to give you the background since I'm here.
But most of those, those projects were like beach re-nourishment projects where this is, this is, this, this project we're talking about tonight is filling in the access points that you're then going to be walking over. So it's not as much of a, you know, the sand that you're going to be sitting on while you're enjoying the beach.
Right. I understand.
Great. Could I ask a question? Anna Martin nineteen how wrote? Your slides, either I missed it or only half of the curve of Little Nahat Beach is covered. The access from the Little Nahat side, there are two accesses and one is a paved old access and one is a kind of a dune and one neighbor has put a cover over it. So anyway, I'm just wondering, why isn't that also being considered?
So that, the access that, that map or boardwalk, rollout boardwalk of that new access path over in Little Nahat is actually a great example of what you would see in these, you know, other areas that Trey was just talking about. It's a little tricky on a with that dune and that part of the beach is also categorized with FEMA damage from the twenty eighteen storm. So it's kind of going through and, and it's lumped in with damage that was done on Doggy Beach as well across the street. So it's kind of going through a parallel but independent process. And, but we, we are, we have been talking about, you know, combining the efforts as we move forward. But the, the idea here is to make the other access paths similar to what that most recent path is over in Little Nahat. But obviously, next step, long-term solution of raising the entire dune height, that would come, that, that one would, that one would be lumped in as well with that type of project.
Okay, sounds right. Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Trey, two quick questions. If, if the application is submitted at the end of March, when are the funds released? And could you venture a guess as to our probability of success with that grant application?
So the applications go in in March. They generally state that they're going to evaluate them, you know, by the end of April, early May. So far, MVP has been fairly good at being on time. I will say the whole state is a little bit behind at the moment just due to COVID and a lot of people getting pulled in different directions. But I'd expect we would know, you know, late April, early May. And then they go through the contracting process, which would generally probably take place right after the end of the fiscal year, so that's the end of June. So we would likely be in the summertime where we get those funds and be able to, you know, keep moving.
Any, any feel for the probability of success with the application?
I think it's pretty high, you know. The one thing I can say is with the MVP, and then there's the sister program, which is the MCZM Resiliency Program, and they both work together. Is that, you know, once you're in and you're actually making progress and they see that, they like continuing them on. They generally realizes that, you know, some of these projects are divided up, you know, A to do the complexity and B cost of, you know, you have these timeframes that you have to get it done in. So, you know, they're used to them coming in for several go-arounds. And I, I know we've already spoken to MVP and they were excited that we were coming back. Especially because they like seeing things done. And with these three access points, you know, getting from where we are now to the point of actually having, you know, sand on the ground is really pretty short and fairly straightforward relative to a lot of coastal projects. And so I think they're excited to see that happen.
That's great news. Thanks.
Hey, great. Any other questions, Tony? While Trey is here, if there's anybody in the, in the audience that wants to ask Trey a question, maybe, maybe now's the time. So we don't keep them for the rest of the meeting.
There's nothing in the chat.
And, and if anybody has questions, feel free to email Tony. It's very easy to access me and we can get answers back to you. So if you're not available to speak this evening or would like just to do it via email, please feel free.
Well, thank you, Trey, for, for this work and for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see where I am. Yeah. Okay, we need to, we need to approve some changes in the FY twenty-two budget, Tony?
Yes.
A little bit. I moved it to board selection vote. Nope, I'm too far ahead. To approve the twenty twenty-two budget adjustments presented and sent to the advisory finance committee for their ongoing review.
Second?
Most of the debate discussion, Tony, you want to summarize what those adjustments were?
Yes, fairly simple. We're increasing the amount of funds that we are putting towards general debt. We had a conversation with our financial advisors this past week about, you know, what, what we are required to spend on debt in interest and principal this year and other considerations as far as how much money to put towards that or appropriate towards that effort that might allow us to pay down additional principal on top of our minimum payment. So these changes will essentially, it adds fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars to DPW principal debt. And it adds a hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to general debt.
Okay, well, it's always good to use free cash, pay debt with free cash. Good use of those funds. This is, these are, this is long-term debt we're talking about, I believe.
Well, we, it's all, it's all long-term and short-term. If we do have extra funds there to pay down, you know, above our minimum, we would be putting that towards long-term, high-interest debt. You want to get rid of, you want to get rid of those high interest rates as soon as possible.
Right. Absolutely. Okay, I have no problem with that. Any further discussion on this? Josh or Jane?
Nope, sounds like a good idea.
Yes.
Okay. No further discussion, all in favor?
Josh Hattramay?
Jane Camp D I.
Not calling them I. I would need to open and close the warrant, Tony.
Yes, please. If you want to open it, and then I can go through the changes.
Yep. I moved it to board selectmen vote to open the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant as presented for submission of articles by all town boards, committees, personnel and the public. for submission of articles by all town boards, committees, personnel, and the public for consideration of placement onto the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Question made. Second discussion. Go ahead, Tony.
The changes to the warrant. So we had, number one, we had some shuffling around. So this, this NWRA borrowing got moved further down and numbers were, you know, article numbers were adjusted to account for that. And the Coast Guard design moved a little bit up in the order. And a lot of this is just a matter of thinking about, you know, the Coast Guard design article is going to take a lot, a lot of time to get through. CPC articles are going to take a lot of time to get through. So we're just, you know, as we are thinking about, you know, the length of the meeting, we're just trying to organize it in a way that, you know, you try to get some of these longer things done in it. They drain the energy of the room. So it's just more of like a, a consideration there. We also added, we're adding, we, we do have on marijuana, local tax. Here, this is the language that we were, Dan and I have been working on. So this would, if, and there is no pending marijuana facility in town or looking to come into town. But if that were to happen down the road, we're allowed to adopt a local sales tax to ride on top of the state tax. The reason we're, we're putting this here is it's pretty clear that these, this billion-dollar industry and millions of dollars of it is here in the state are targeting or looking at communities that don't have a local tax or don't have a bylaw set up. So, you know, we're actually, where this is a proactive approach, trying to just put this in place, but it wouldn't actually generate any revenue unless an establishment came into town. Article thirty, we still haven't intentionally blanked. However, Dan, Dan had put together a, I'm trying to find my, Dan had put together a proposal for the Board of Selectmen to consider regarding marijuana bylaws. So he looked at, we, we looked at, you know, what does the state law regarding legalizing marijuana and the sale of marijuana allow municipalities to do at the local level? I'm going to try to pull up. Did, did that, did the screen change at all when I pulled this up?
It's, it's the page right after the, the budget numbers.
All right, hold on. So this year, Article thirty, can you see Article thirty zoning by law on there? All right. So Dan Scrip, if you're, you're still with us and unmuted, you could jump in here. But essentially, this is a zoning bylaw. So there is a process by which this would have to go in front of the planning board before it could go in front of town meeting. So we may not, and that takes sixty-five days and we're about seventy days away from town meeting. So we may not have this available or it may not have gone through the planning board in time to be.
Hey, Tony, let me, let me add to that a little bit.
Go ahead.
Sixty-five days comes in as a limitation the planning board has to hold a hearing, not just a meeting, but an actual hearing, which noticed, published, posted, all that stuff that there are forty-eight five requires. If, 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 if the planning board is really on their ball and gets through it as soon as possible, it can be done in a few weeks. But that would require them to receive the Board of Selectmen's applications for petition, or whatever you want to call it, regarding this particular article. And they can meet as early as Tuesday. They can set up a hearing or at least two weeks later. And then they have some time to come up with a recommendation. And so theoretically, it can be done within a few weeks, but that would really be a stretch.
So I will send this language to each of you to read on your own. And then we can post or meet, you know, whether it be at the next scheduled meeting or, or meet sooner to discuss this, should you want to pursue a proposal to the planning board for them to consider and for us to have on the town meeting warrant.
Is there a need to push this through so quickly?
It, there isn't, I'm not, as I said, this is a proactive approach. So we have received, we've received inquiries in the past about, you know, the possibility of getting retail space in town. But naturally, you know, we're so limited on retail space in town anyways, that it's, 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 you know, it's, it's not like there's a, you know, ten open storefronts, you know, waiting for a new business to come in. But we just, we're, we're thinking proactively here. So like I said, these, these, you know, they are looking at, they're looking at towns that don't have bylaws in place and don't have a local tax in place. So, you know, we don't want to be, we meet once a year. So if we can put it on there, if we can consider it and get it ready, it's always good to be proactive, but we don't have anything pending in front of us right now.
And Gene, to your point, the state heavily regulates marijuana production, processing, cultivating and retailing, of course. So if someone wanted to come into town, there's a, there's a months-long process that they need to follow, including a, a public meeting with notice all, all the, all the butters and interested parties. They've got to come up with an agreement between the host community, which would be in this case us, and in, in the, in the marijuana retailer. So nothing's going to happen overnight. This is, it could take as much as seven, eight months for anything to actually come to fruition. And within that time period, there's plenty of notice and plenty of publication to be had regarding whatever might happen.
I can tell you, Gene, that there are, there is a, there is a retail shop in Lynn, there's a retail shop in Salem. I know from speaking with other town administrators, Swamp Scott and Marblehead have been approached as well. And they're going through the public meeting process and host agreement development process. So, you know, again, it's just, it's a proactive approach.
Okay.
So we'll send this over to you, Dan. Can you, do you want to just quickly hit a couple of the top points on, on what the state law allows us to consider for zoning?
Sure, sure. It's really, it's pretty simple when it comes down to it. It's really time, place and manner. Also, we can, we can limit the number of establishments or the dispensaries. And we can also affect signage, although signage for us is a bit of an issue because any signage bylaws we pass have to be no more restrictive than any lines regarding PAKI liquor store licenses. And we don't have any of those things. So any bylaw we pass has got to really affect both of those things. Our, our biggest advantage is we can dictate where these things can go. And that would be an amendment to the table of uses table. And I, I mimicked the, the requirements we have for other realtors, other retailers, or retailers, I'm sorry, other retailers. And that matches what you see there with Tony showing you right now, that anyone coming with a marijuana establishment would have to seek a special permit. It can only appear in the, or develop in the B1 district. Now, at the same time, the planning board might look at this and say, well, you know, we, we think this might be better. We might want to add this. And so it might come back to look a little different. Parking, I just thought of, after I sent this to Tony, would be something we might want to address as well. But like I said, it's time, place and manner, signage, and we can also limit the number of establishments in town.
So I will, so back over to the, that is not included. The, the article number thirty, which is the bylaws, is still blank. That's not, you guys are not adopting that language tonight. You're just bringing in the tax onto the warrant tonight. But I will send that over to you guys and we can talk more about it in the coming week.
Well, if that's the language, then we already have it, right, in our packing?
You may, yeah, you might, you might have it.
I didn't see it in there, Tony. The one, the package I have, I didn't see it.
Well, I'll resend it anyways.
After this.
One quick question. Is three percent the maximum tax that can be applied?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's a max, that, that's basically an excise tax. And part of the host community agreement allows us to also charge a three percent community impact fee, which would be in addition to that tax.
The other change to the warrant that's in front of you is the inclusion of a new article, Article number thirty-seven, which is, it's blank, we're still developing the language. This, the, the citizen petition for lowlands drainage that you see here as number thirty-eight. We've had a lot of discussion at the finance committee about the language here and the, and the idea moving forward. So we will be putting forward a, an article, we'll be working with the lead petitioner, the FinCom, on a different article with the same intent, but that is written a little bit cleaner. The thing with a citizen petition is that you, we cannot change the language due to, due to procedural rules. We do, we cannot change any language to a citizen petition. So the idea here is we'll throw another one right in front of it with the language that we all come to agreement on. And should it pass, the citizen petition will be withdrawn on the floor. So I'm just entering it in as a placeholder for now. We're working on that language. And then, and that's it. And then, you know, obviously, down the road here with the plastic ban, one article that was presented to you guys today, that'll get entered in here somewhere by your next meeting.
Okay, Tony. So some of these changes in the ordering of the articles were a result of a request from the Finance Committee?
Yes. Yes. Yep. Yep, specifically the Coast Guard housing.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
No.
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Dean, can't the eye?
My calling and I. We need to close the warrant?
Yes, please. And close, close and send to the Advisory and Finance Committee.
Yep. I moved the Board of Selectmen vote to accept and close the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant as presented and send it to the Advisory and Finance Committee to begin taking positions with the understanding that the ongoing review will occur by the Board of Selectmen, that modifications may occur at a later time.
Second.
Question, Nathan, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Jean, can't the eye?
My calling and I. Okay.
Mr. Tony, I have a thought here. We should also ask the Selectmen to make a motion to, to, to send the draft bylaw to the planning board for a hearing under chapter forty-eight, section five.
Well, I want, I want to give them an oppor, I want to give them an opportunity to review it in case they have any suggested changes.
Okay.
You know, before we do that.
Okay, that's fine.
I understand we're under a time crunch, but we aren't.
Okay.
We are and we aren't.
I'm happy to do a quickie meeting next week if that's necessary to move this along to the planning board.
Okay.
Okay. We'll be on item five, preserving East Point. All I have to say on this for tonight is that I am working on a couple of presentations that I hope to work, develop with my colleagues, Josh and Gene and Tony on some maybe two or three sort of off presentations on northeastern, maybe one at the end of of March regarding the proposed development, maybe another one in April regarding eminent domain again. But we'll develop them over the next week or so. But I, I do plan on having a couple, couple of other Zoom meetings regarding this. And they won't be, there'll be a separate public meeting outside of the, probably the Board of, you know, Board of Selectmen's regular scheduled meeting, so.
The more information we put out there and the more frequently we put it out there, the better.
Right. Josh, you have anything on this?
Just, you know, want to remind folks that the citizens do have the right to determine the destiny of East Point and preserve it as conservation land through eminent domain if necessary. And that it's our job to make sure they have the opportunity to exercise that right by putting that article on the town warrant. So that's what we'll be doing.
That's a good point, Josh. I mean, sometimes, you know, it's just like any other, you know, some petitions we have. But if people want to have, want to vote on a particular issue, they should have the right to vote on that. And that's simply what we're doing here. Okay. Let's see, Town Administrator's report.
So what I wanted to do, what I have on the list here is share my screen to here. This, if you can see this, this website here, so MyCityPocket. This is an, an, an app, a communication app that the town has signed a contract with. It's, it's actually a great deal for the town. It's only a couple hundred bucks for the year. Essentially what this app is, it's free to our residents. Of course, you know, you, you know, please take a look at the terms of, of, of downloading the app. That's your decision to download. But it is free to you. And essentially what it looks like is, is right there in this picture in your hand. What this will do is when we have our flashing digital message board at the end of the causeway, we'll be putting that same message on this app. You can set this up to be, to provide notifications to your phone every time a new message gets posted. Or you can put, set it up for only emergency posting. So for example, we did, you know, like we had a water break today and we did the reverse nine-one-one call. You know, we put that on the app as well. So if you don't, you know, you could just get a text or an alert on your phone, you hit the button. And, you know, this isn't just emergencies though. This could be, you know, school snow day. This could be special event. This could be, you know, just random notification. So it's another tool in our toolbox to improve communication with our residents for fairly, fairly low cost. And I will, you know, right now, I have it, I have it up on my phone. It's probably, it's probably backwards on the screen. But, you know, as our, our test message was the hours of town hall. So if you go to your app store, type in MyCityPocket, it's free for download. You select Nahha and, and, and that's it. That's how you get set up for it. So I encourage a lot of folks to take a look at it and or, or to download the app to help stay informed of, of events and announcements from the town.
Thank you, Tony. It looks like a, another good resource. You know, I'm thinking, and I'm not sure if there is one, but, you know, with all of this advent of, you know, new technology, you know, we're going to a new website, electronic signboard, now we have this app. I think we need to really update or develop a better policy that could be adopted on, you know, what gets at, what gets placed on these devices? What authorization is needed, those types of things. I mean, sometimes, you know, people are just thinking, you know, calling you up, put this on the signboard, put that on the signboard. And, you know, I drive by and say, what the heck? How did that get on? That, you know, I, I think we need a policy of some sort of what gets posted and by who and what. You know, I I think we need a policy of some sort of what gets posted and by whom and what's the purpose of it?
We
Think about that.
We we started, we started getting there prior to COVID, and I hate, you know, I'm sorry that the pandemic like continues to be an excuse for why things are slowing down. But, you know, it did, it did really put a lot of those other wants on the shelf. But we did develop an internal form of that department heads would fill out and submit to us in the in the town administrator's office for public, you know, notice or information. And on that form, they would check off, you know, what they're requesting, what tools they want to utilize. So website, bulletin board on the on the local TV channel, code red call, the 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 message board at the end of the causeway, Facebook, you know, so we put here are all these different tools. And then we had somewhat of an internal policy as to what type of stuff would would trigger, you know, a tool. So, you know, code red, for instance, our reverse nine one one, we try, we try really, we try not to use that too often because we don't want to, you know, bog people down with their phones ringing. It actually is the best tool, though, when you have an emergency or an important message to get to everybody. The, you know, the community channel, we with the IT upgrades that we did and the cable cast upgrades that we did, our community channel is now with, once we have our website updated, we'll be able to link, you know, information that gets presented on that bulletin board. And that's really helpful for the elderly population, you know. So depending on what the message is, if it's something from council on aging, we try to put it through there. So we do have something boiling, but unfortunately it kind of got put on the shelf. But, you know, so we'll, I I agree, we'll, we'll, we'll try to, we'll strive to finish that off.
Yeah, some sort of policy, I mean, you know, things evolve so quickly, it wasn't long ago that public notification was the kiosk at the beginning of the classroom of the bank. So we've come a long way from there, but I mean, I think we need to be thinking about about this.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Tony?
No, I I know we've been on for a while now, so.
Yeah, that's okay. We have citizens forum.
In my, in my chat, the is first one up is Ken Corangelo.
I'm surprised at that.
I want to first thank, thank former chairman Lombard for making sure citizens forum went at the end of the meetings. That was very, you know, very time, time saving move in some ways. Um, I just, two things with regard to East Point. And the first one is just on the the agenda item as it was listed was an update on communication regarding possible mediation. And, you know, you talked about various communications, is there any update on the the actual mediation?
I know that the board has sent a response to Northeastern, and as far as I know, Tony, I haven't heard back.
I haven't heard anything back yet.
Okay, and that response, that was the the letter that you had published?
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. Because although we discussed that we are going to respond, as you noticed on that letter, I I signed that as as a chair of the Board of Selectmen. So I would, and I know that the the other two members are in agreement with it. But that was sent, I think, when last week, Tony?
It was sent on Thursday, Thursday, maybe or Friday?
Well, we haven't heard a response from that. You know, basically, Ken, what we're looking for, you know, you've seen the letters. You know, Superior Court top had suggested that Northeastern and the town of Nahat intermediation. And we're completely agree to enter into mediation, not with preconditions. And we feel that the the response we got from Northeastern was they they just set up all these preconditions of mediation. And, you know, that's not how mediation should start. We should start with an open book in the wind side of discussion. And so we're willing to mediate, we're willing to mediate without any preconditions.
I just wanted to confirm that there was no further communication after after that exchange.
That was that was sent on the twenty sixth.
Okay. Um, the second one is, this is a little bit longer, it's actually three questions. And what I'd like to do is just sort of read them through. I will, I will send this via email or chat afterward. But it's actually on behalf of ten citizens with who have signed this and representing others. So I just would like to get these questions to you, please. And and this is to the Board of Selectmen, gentlemen, we represent Nahat citizens concerned about the town's approach toward northeastern universities' proposed development at East Point, particularly as it relates to eminent domain. As taxpayers and citizens, we request that you answer these questions with public discussion as an agenda item at your next regularly scheduled meeting. So specifically, one, could you please explain why the town of Nahat voluntarily joined two lawsuits between two private entities? Northeastern University and the Hot Preservation Trusts? What discussions led to those decisions and who was involved? And what was the benefit to the town of exposing it to third parties' legal risks and incurring additional costs? That's question one. Question two, could you describe the process by which the town's legal strategy with regard to East Point is being formulated? And how Nahat Preservation Trusts and or Keep Nahat Wild and or their members are involved?
He can.
May I finish?
I can't hear you, that's the problem.
Okay, sorry. I can go louder. How far back?
You can start from there, I I got most of it.
Okay, so again, could you describe the process for the legal strategy? Based on public records requests, Nahat Preservation Trust has made gifts of one hundred sixty seven thousand four hundred eighty dollars and seventy nine cents since twenty eighteen for legal fees as shown below. There's a list of the six payments that were disclosed by by the records request. These amounts are not consistently noted in the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. How does Nahat Preservation Trust know when and how much to contribute? And finally, number three, why was it necessary or desirable to execute an open ended gift letter in April twenty twenty within a high preservation trust? Thus eliminating public discussion and disclosure of the individual gifts. And in that letter, why was it necessary to include the language that paraphrasing here? Neither the town nor the board makes any representation or promise that it has endorsed or will endorse a particular course of action or recommend a particular course of action to town meeting. So we appreciate your candor and transparency in this matter. Sincerely, myself, Nancy Carey, Jimmy Ward, Michael Manning, E Rogers, Danny Nicosia, David Walsh, Catherine Carey, Marcia DeVall, Christian Howard.
I look forward to answering all of those questions, Ken.
So I'll send this, I'll send this as a document, obviously not expecting an answer this evening, but thank you.
Great opportunity for me to explain what's going on.
I agree. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, let's see, any other, Tony, any other citizens forum?
No, I don't have anything else in my chat. If anybody else, if any other residents on on the call want to unmute themselves, just provide your name and address first. Doesn't seem like anybody else has anything to bring forward.
Were you going to go into executive session, but we're coming back, we're going to be turning to public session, right?
Right.
Okay. We have a motion to enter into executive session.
Obviously, we don't know when we'll be back into public session, but it'll be a bit, right?
Right, hopefully it's not too long, it's been a long night.
Well, I'm just, I'm, you know, if anybody wanted to return to the meeting, the public session portion of the meeting, it's hard for us to estimate exactly how long that would be. Just trying to provide a courtesy for anybody that might want to return.
Right. We will. Hmm, I did not, I'll be honest, I didn't think about how to with Zoom, you know, how to how to handle this one. So what we'll do, I think what we can do is we will stay on this Zoom link. And what I'll do is I'll ask everybody other than the Board of Selectmen and Dan Scrip to leave. We will take us off of the live broadcast on TV. Then I will I will turn on the waiting room. So people can, you know, if you try to get back on and we're not back in the public session, you'll just sit in the waiting room until I let you back in. And at that time, when we go back to public session, I'll turn back on the the TV broadcast.
And to me. So with that. In accordance with Massachusetts general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three, to discuss impending litigation regarding being played as Elias Inc. In the accordance with Massachusetts general law thirty A, section twenty one A six, to consider the lease of Kelly Green's golf course to R and B management in accordance with Massachusetts general law thirty A, section twenty one A two, to conduct strategic sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with the town administrator.
Do we have to add in there that we're going to return to regular session?
We've already mentioned that, so we've completed that task.
So that's okay, all right, I second the motion.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Josh Andrew my.
Jean Canty I.
Mark Colan I. Okay.
So all of you have nothing to do tonight, can stay on.
We promise it won't take more than a couple hours. All right, let me.
Okay. Pete, we're recording but not broadcasting, yeah?
Okay.
Well, so and we're back into open session. We've closed executive session and we have a couple of votes to take here, right?
One vote.
I'll make a motion, I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Kelly Green, Kelly Green's golf course lease and memorandum of understanding with R and B management.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded, any discussion? Tony, do you want to say anything about this, or just that we've come to an agreement?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, we are obviously excited to move forward with the signing of this lease. Where, you know, I can say that in the short time that I've known Brett, he is, he he puts that extra effort in the and care and pride into his work. And I'm extremely excited to see, you know, what his partner does in the kitchen. I, you know, the I've heard she's an excellent chef, so the two of them, you know, and are, you know, did it presented a great bid. I also want to thank the golf course committee, the chairman Pete Fitzpatrick, who's on here, and the rest of the members. They were heavily involved in this process and, you know, obviously we couldn't do it without them. So and they all are extremely excited as well about this, about this agreement. So and thank you to the board and thank you to Dan. This is a five year term with the opportunity to extend two more times for a total of fifteen years. And and that's it, we're excited to, we're excited to get the doors back open and and have another functioning place to grab a bite to eat and hit around the golf, so.
Okay, Pete, thanks a lot, thank you very much, and Dan, thank you for getting these negotiations, so I appreciate it. And look forward to having a burger with people and a beer down there at some point. So I'm not a golfer, but I like to eat. And great, any further discussion? Being here and done, all in favor?
Josh Andrew my.
Jean Canty I.
Mark Colan I. Get a motion to adjourn?
Before I do that, Mr. Chairman, I I know Josh, I'm going to see you tomorrow at nine thirty. I'd like to swing by and get a signature from Jean, get a signature from you, Mr. Chairman, and also Peter, so I can get these wet signatures off to the other side to get this done as soon as possible. So are you guys, I guess, question, are you going to be around tomorrow in town?
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, can you do it in the morning at some point?
I can do it whenever, well, Josh, Tony, I'm meeting at nine thirty, so I can come to your place before then or after?
Yeah, people will be fine, I'll be here.
Okay, I'll swing by eight thirty or probably nineish, right around there.
Yeah, what, you know, what, now we're talking about this, Dan, what, what is the legality around electronic signatures? Is that something that we could do in the future?
Yeah, there's, there's actually an act that came out, it's like the Act of Electronic Signatures and notaries are now doing things over Zoom, although they still need a wet signature, but you can still do a notary over Zoom. So there is a law that specifically addresses that, so. And because of COVID, it's becoming more and more common. I can send you an email that I sent to Bobby Joe, I don't know, six months ago in that regard.
Send it to Tony and maybe, you know, it's something we should probably have in place, Tony. I mean, if we're away or something and
Like a DocuSign?
I'm traveling to the national box this summer, you need my signature, I can zoom in from the Grand Canyon and
Yeah, DocuSign, DocuSign is the one that comes to mind, popular.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's legal.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So motion to adjourn and we're all done.
So the motions we made and seconded, all in favor?
Andrew my.
Jean Canty I.
Mark Colan I, thanks, guys.
Thanks. Good night.